Welcome to the Olentangie Local School Board of Education Regular Meeting. This is a business session. It is Thursday, July 6, 2017. It is 6:00 PM and we are in the Olentangie Administrative Offices, the Berlin Room. Mrs. Hatfield, did you call us or call the roll for us because I've already called us to order?
Absolutely. Mrs. Beesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. Barks?
Here. Do you all please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we approve our agenda, I'm going to need a motion to approve the agenda with the attached addendum that you have and one correction. Mr. Rafe, did you have any details that you'd like to share with us on these two items?
No, they're all, everything in the addendum is what's been added since you were, since we released the last agenda.
A motion?
A motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Beesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Barks?
Yes. We have a couple of presentations tonight, and our first one is our Community Engagement Presentation. Mr. Wright.
Good evening, everyone. And tonight, I bring to you our second Community Engagement Report. We did this in August of last year, and this is in response to one of our district benchmarks, Benchmark 8. And the bullet that we are gathering this information to support talks about community outreach and includes annual reports from the principals to the superintendent, and this is the format that we have elected to share this information with you. A year ago when we did this, it was a little more after the fact, and I asked principals to think back to what information they could acquire about engagement opportunities they had, engagement opportunities they had with their local communities. And then this year, it was a constant reminder for me, we talked about it monthly, asking them to keep track as they go through their information. And we have at this point, we've tried to turn these events and categorize them into five categories. And the enrichment are informational, typically connecting with parents, bringing them in to share information either about the school that's specific to their children, or some of our building-specific examples would be Berkshire Middle School bringing in Prosecutor O'Brien to talk about some of the cyber-awareness events for parents. So that would be examples of that. Cultural would be, many of our schools have used diversity nights or multicultural nights, but we also include music and drama events in this as well. Service opportunities where our students are either providing support, collecting items for different charities, or going out into the community and serving in a variety of capacities. Community connections, we are categorizing this as non-parents. So if we are interacting with members of our community that aren't just our parents for our building, then we're putting them in this category. And the last one are celebrations, bringing them in to celebrate honors or having parents come in and engage. Obviously, we have bring our parents in for breakfast with our elementary kids at all the buildings for doughnuts or muffins, and so those are the types of things we look at in that category. This data is calculated or collected from K-12, and it does include our academy and the Oasis program. And at this point, we're still just collecting information from our principals as they share it. As we continue to look at, we may ask teachers to submit the events that they would like to as well. In every category, you're going to see that we have increased. We have an average of 24 events per building this year, and then everything in parentheses will be last year's numbers. So we had 22 last year. We had almost 400 events at the elementary level across our 15 schools, so that's up significantly from last year. Just shy of 90 at the middle school level across our five middle schools, and then just shy of 100 at the high school, again, up a third in that category. So when we look at them split into the categories, celebrations are our second highest, I'm sorry, our third highest, I started at the bottom this time, but up significant, again, our principals were able to chart this better. Community connections, this was driven a large part from our Olentangie Academy. The teachers and the program reach out to local businesses and ask, and engineers and scientists in the field, and bring them into speak with the kids at the academy. So this was at least one a week at the academy, so they had a tremendous amount of support in that category. Our service opportunity is very consistent. We have a number of programs that are supported year to year, so that was very consistent this year. Cultural, and I think still this is the one that our principals don't give all of the information, they don't think of, include the second grade musical and include the cultural night. So they're still, we're still working on allowing them to collect the information. And then bringing parents in across the buildings, this one, I see their information nights or again, sharing information will help them work with their children also up this year. So as we continue to look at this information, we would like feedback from you, and it doesn't have to be tonight, or it can be, about additional information you might like to see, or a different way that we could categorize it or capture how our building principals and their teams are connecting with our community. So would that open up to questions or additional recommendations?
I have one. I have heard a couple of things out within the community about now that we have middle schools not filtering into one high school, and they're splitting some more community events to bring in that, like the smaller population that might go to Olentangie, like say at Liberty Middle or at Berkshire that's split there. Could we track like what we're doing to, you know, to get the kids involved with their new school?
Certainly. Thank you for that. Other questions?
And also to make it easier to make those connections, because I know this summer they were trying to make connections athletically, because the kids could start coming to camps, even though they won't come to Olentangie next year, they could, but, you know, just to know, just to know who is coming, they did a lot of it by Facebook, like, we had a parent.
Beth Probst?
Yeah. Who put out who's going to Olentangie so we can make those connections. So there, organically, they were trying to make those connections, but if we could help them in some way, you know, and it's not just, you know, high school redistricting, but middle and elementary too.
Or I'd be interested in knowing like if the middle schools or the elementary have a, you know, a Liberty Day or a Shanahan Day where kids can wear, you know, fan wear, spirit wear, just because I know that that's front and center on a lot of parents' minds.
Okay.
I do think that the, I forgot the official title, but the All Music Day to support.
Arts Festivals?
Yeah, with all the bands and choirs and coming, I think that's a great concept.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Wright. Second presentation, we want to welcome Mr. Dunn from Mount Carmel. And apologize, I forget your comment.
Steve.
Thank you. And they're going to present our report on workplace health.
Thank you for having us. We're really excited to present the overview for the 2016-2017 Live Well Program of the Olentangie Local Schools. Mount Carmel is really proud of our partnership with Olentangie Schools and the Live Well Program. McKella is the onsite health coach and has done a really great job with not only increasing participation and engagement, but also some numbers of improvement that the staff has been able to achieve over the last year. McKella's done all the hard work, so I will give the floor to her so she can present the overview and the numbers that I think, hopefully, find very interesting.
Thanks. So I'm McKella. I'm the onsite health coach here in the Olentangie School District. So during the school year, I try to get to each school at least once a month, and I meet with employees. I don't work with the students at all, just with the staff. And we have monthly luncheon learns, challenges. I have people that meet with me once a month, twice a month, for biometrics, body compositions, things like that, and I teach fitness classes onsite as well. So first of all, we've got our Mount Carmel, our mission, our vision, and our values. So we serve together in the spirit of the gospel as a compassionate and transforming healing presence within our communities. Our vision is, as a, our vision is as a mission-driven, innovative health organization, we will become the national leader in improving the health of our communities and each person we serve. We will be the most trusted health partner for life. And our values are reverence, commitment to those who are in poor, justice, stewardship, integrity, compassion, and excellence. So our agenda, we will first talk about metabolic syndrome, why we're focusing on it, some testimonials from staff, our attendance and participation data, results of a survey that we sent out earlier during the school year, and our recommendations for next school year. So first, we have metabolic syndrome, kind of a definition of it. So it's a group of risk factors, five risk factors, that cause more serious medical issues, such as diabetes, heart conditions, and in turn, they increase medical spending. So if someone has three or more of these risk factors, they're considered to be at risk, and that they have metabolic syndrome. So, but the good thing is that all of these things can be changed throughout lifestyle. You don't even have to take medications to change it, it's all lifestyle changes. So we've got abnormal low-density lipids, abnormal waist circumference, abnormal glucose, abnormal blood pressure, and cholesterol. So since 2014, when we first started this program, we have had a reduction in metabolic syndrome, which is great. So we have 19 employees that are no longer at risk. We have 25% of the employees that had healthy changes in their risk factors, and 55% of employees that did not worsen. So with that, exercise is a factor in this. So we had 162 employees that had healthy changes in their level of physical activity. So the bottom line here is that this is decreasing medical costs. Here we just have some examples of people that have had metabolic syndrome versus people that don't have it, so you can kind of see the cost difference between the two there So we've got a few slides of testimonials, but one I just want to point out is in the top-left corner. So we have a mobile mammogram unit that travels, and we send it to three different locations here throughout the school year. And this was my favorite testimonial. We had a teacher email me and let me know that she went because it was there, it was convenient, they found breast cancer, and they found it early enough that it was removed, and she should have a great prognosis. So that was really exciting for us. It just kind of confirmed that this is, yes, this is a good thing that we're doing. I also have people that, like I said before, meet with me regularly. So on the right-hand side, you can see that we had someone lose almost 20 pounds, drop their blood pressure points, which in turn gets them off of medication. So for this year's participation, we are using Google Docs to keep track of participation. So here you can see how many submissions we've had so far. Everything's due at the end of this month, so these numbers will go up. We have a partnership with MC Fitness, so we offer discounts to Olentangie employees. So we have 50, we actually have 60 staff members that are members at MC Fitness. I teach classes at Shanahan, so I have at least 21 regular staff members that attend those, and those are free. And I have at least 16 people that I meet with regularly to do body composition or biometric So this past year, we held 27 screening events. Out of those 27 screening events, we had 60% of employee participation, and that was our goal. So we had over 600 people vaccinated with the flu shot. This summer, we are holding 64 activities and events for staff and employees. And we had during the school year stress management seminars, we had 14 people attend those. And then during the school year, we have yoga classes and other fitness events that staff can attend throughout the district. And the bottom there, you can see the top participating locations in the screening event in the fall. Next here, we have a comparison of the very first year that this program started to this year. So you can see that overall participation has gone up, the health score of the employee population has gone up, and if you look at the very bottom, the extreme health risk has dropped drastically, which is very good. We have the survey responses next. We sent this out at the end of the school year, we had 130 responses. 83% of respondents agreed that the Live Well Program has given them new information about health and wellness. 85% agreed that this program has provided them with new knowledge, and 79% are very satisfied with the information and resources available. Some of our feedback here was that Google Docs, the Google Docs submission was a little confusing, so right now, we're working on making this a lot easier for this upcoming school year. Everything will be on one platform for everybody to use. And last, we have the recommendations for next school year. So we're going to focus on education and the importance of having a primary care physician. Throughout being in the schools, I've noticed a lot of new graduates, new teachers, and those who are new to the area didn't have a doctor. So we wanted to make sure that they know where to go, have a list of doctors, and we also want to focus on prevention of metabolic syndrome, just because that can be reduced due to lifestyle. We'd like to use the portal, One Community, to make things easier for participants so that we can get rid of the Google Docs. And then we'd also like to explore opportunities with the benefits committee so that we can get more leverage with results and kind of show with the medical costs how this is improving. And we have references. Does anyone have any questions?
That's good news.
That is good news.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it. I belong to MC Health because of the partnership here, and it's, I just enjoy going. Like on Saturday mornings, all my neighbors are there because my neighbors go, and Roger's one of my neighbors, and the same people, but that we see every Saturday morning, it's like a hangout.
We're just gossiping about you that don't go.
You know, I can say from the treasurer's office perspective, we're really excited to see that the program is getting momentum, that we're gaining ground, we're seeing the participation increase. I know originally, when the program started, we had employees a little concerned about where the information was collected, where it was housed, how it's shared with administration, but really, this is the high-level information that we collect and receive from Mount Carmel in an aggregate, and it's really there for their participation and to make healthier lifestyle choices. So I'm excited to see the participation grow and that it's being, that it's effective for them.
So I guess in discussions with the benefits committee.
Right.
Go ahead and think about like incentives to do, like nationwide, we do know your numbers. And so if I go do my screenings, and I'll get premium reductions, and then we take that data, and then we can look for trends across different business units, right, which business units are healthier than others, where do we assign resources to help them get better? So I mean, it took a while to get over that initial issue of what are you going to do with the data? But once people get comfortable that it's confidential, it's scrubbed, it's clean, it's not used for anything other than wellness.
Absolutely.
It can be pretty impactful.
And, you know, I think as we move forward into the next school year, we have more meetings with our insurance committee, and that's one of the things that we want to do is to bring in Mount Carmel and let them give the same information, have, you know, more in-front presentation with the committee and discuss those kinds of things and see where we can go to make it more beneficial for the health insurance program overall. So we're excited for the partnership.
Good. Good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board president report, really simple. I mean, if you're watching Facebook, you're seeing these great postings about our teachers. And I really wanted to express the board's congratulations to all of our teachers who have and will continue to be named Teachers of the Year for their respective buildings, because they're coming out now, they're floating around. I mean, I just want to say our kids and families personally really appreciate the these professional educators and what they do for these kids. So it's probably not enough to be recognized on Facebook, but press releases, but the more we toot the horn, I think the better it is. Great people and providing great service to the community. So that's all I had tonight. Unless anyone wants to take some of my time, you can have it. With that, Mr. Rafe, please, the superintendent's report.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. So we've got the preliminary state test results out here, are starting with grades 3, 4, and 5. Preliminary results show strong performance across all areas. 50% of our students across the district are advanced or accelerated in 20 to 23 state tests. We're looking at, and the preliminary, again, this is all preliminary data, because the data's released in raw data sets through OD, and then Jeanette Kenny takes it all in and puts it in workable form so our principals can analyze it. As you heard in, or saw in the email I sent you, this endeavor took her a little bit longer than the last one, so she got the data out at 2:42 AM is when I got my email from her, so. But I won't take, miss the opportunity to still again, call her a data geek. So there we have 3, 4, and 5, and 80%, the 80% proficient are better, needed to meet the state indicator. So we're looking good across the board in grades 3, 4, 5. Grade 6, 7, and 8, we do have one area there, the 8th grade math, where we're below 80, it's 78.57. You know, and this is, this is an indicator, part of the problem with this indicator is we're a victim of our own success, because better than 50% of our kids in the 8th grade take Algebra I or geometry. So they're our most high-achieving students, they're not taking the 8th grade test, so then we have a much smaller sample size, and that.
We discussed this in the state testing committee that I was on, because this is something that's hanging up other districts, and the state isn't sure how to, what to do with this group, you know?
Well, and at the end of the day, regardless of that, we need to figure out where the gap is in our instruction and what we can do to make sure we're meeting the indicator. So that anomaly of how, the fact that, you know, our most, our most high-achieving kids aren't taking that test still is an excuse for not making the indicator.
Yeah.
So regardless, we've got to make sure that we hit that indicator. So, and then across the board in high school, the results, the results across the board in high school were very strong, and showed marked improvement. Again, from Jeanette and Ian's preliminary calculation, it appears that our PI will increase by approximately 1.7 points. 12 of the 15 elementary schools show an increase, four of the five middle schools show an increase, and all three high schools have, again, the biggest increase between 4.6 and 6.5 points. So, you know, that's, that's a good thing. I was on, I was, since I was out last week on vacation, I didn't have time to go and dive into what other districts may be thinking their preliminary PI is, but, so I'll get on that, because we all, of course, like to be comparing ourselves, so.
What did we have on the CIP for the?
I, I, yeah, did we change the CIP to show, just to say increase?
B and A.
B and A or increase? So again, our goal is going to be, As across, our goals are always going to be As across the board. As is still 108, so we anticipated from a district standpoint, and now at 103.8, so our goal is going to be to keep creeping that to be 108. Those are obviously middle school and high school. The last slide had the district and the elementary, so. So that's it for state test results. We'll get the final state test results, and all the growth data will come in, and come in later, but overall, it'll be, it'll be pushing September by the time the state has all this data cleaned and out in public format. So the next topic I have in my report is the Berlin High School Mascot and Color Plan. So it is time to select Berlin High School's mascot and colors. So we should first start off with, you know, an excerpt from our Board Policy 7250 where it says mascot names are based on local historical figures or animals with no proper names or directional names. So Mr. Spinner will not have to be in a building central, located north of north, nowhere-centered anything, so. There is no policy reference to school colors, so we will, though, honor the tradition of Olentangie Blue being one of our two primary school colors. So as we move forward in this process, student input will be critical and community input will be critical. So beginning July 10, we are going to open up a survey to the entire district for input on this topic, kind of following our one Olentangie theme. So we want to hear from everybody for suggestions for the school mascot and the school colors. And then in early August, Mr. Spinner will start collecting information from the students who will be attending Berlin High School. And those students will select the top 10 choices for mascot and color through a voting system. And now approximately, we've, I don't know if we've secured the location, but it's August 12, Mr. Spinner and Mr. Betts are going to meet with all the students attending Berlin to select their top three choices from those 10. So we're going to have the kids narrow it down from three, narrow it down from 10. And then in a little bit later, Mr. Spinner and our DLT will confirm those final choices. I think we'll have some select input from five concerned citizens, but, you know, we'll work through this whole process, and then we will announce the final selection at the August 24 board meeting. So, and it's really important that we get moving on this, because we need to, you know, start ordering uniforms and start, you know, doing all of the branding.
All the fun stuff.
School stuff. Yeah, it is. And that really is where it gets fun and starts getting really exciting.
So to that end, will we be trademarking this?
Yeah, exactly.
And then trademarking the balance?
Yeah, everything, everything, everything.
Because we've been after that for a couple of years now.
Well, and that's going to be part of, as Krista finalizes, our, the whole branding topic we've been talking about, going after that, trademarks across the board, monitoring trademarks, monitoring who are, who's using our things, you know, Ohio State is kind of the big bully in town on that topic, but, you know, so I don't know that we have the resources to be that, that way, but, you know, we're certainly going to try to monitor that a lot better.
I think that sounds like a good project for DECA students.
There you go.
A lot of parents who are attorneys in this district, too.
Is that, is that the normal process that kind of, everyone has input and kind of narrow it to the kids that'll go there?
It's been done at multiple ways, like when Liberty was opening, you know, a board member proposed the Liberty Patriots.
It was post 9/11.
So.
Board jumped all over it.
Yeah, the, the board voted, and then kids felt, left out of the process, and then you switch it for orange. So I don't know that there's a right way or a wrong way, so I think this sounds good.
I was going to say, I researched all of our history of determining the mascot, the colors, and we have done it, as Julie said, a variety of ways, and this is a meshing, I think, of everything that allows, you know, now, it used to be paper and pencil, and people would mail in or fax their input, because we have an opportunity to collect input electronically. This will be a really easy way for people to participate. And I also wanted a quick note that we are inviting the Berlin School alumni, the ones especially who came to the groundbreaking, to participate as well. So this first round allows everyone to be a part of it, but then really work with Mr. Spinner and Mr. Betts with those specific students going to Berlin.
And it is, it's, having done this before at Westerville Central, it's a, there's just, you know, a lot of names come up, kids have a suggestion, and they just might not, there's reasons why they can't be the name or the mascot or the, and, you know, we don't always, sometimes the kids don't always, can't just totally turn it over to the kids, because sometimes they may pick something that may not be the most appropriate name out there, so.
They will be creative.
They will. They're always creative, but ultimately, they make, they make good choices in that regard, so. This is an exciting time, and it'll, I think it'll really work with that to get the momentum for the school opening, make it even seem more real, so. My next topic is on school start times, and I want to summarize where we are with this. As you know, we, this was brought to us, we spent considerable time. We spent considerable time over the last three years discussing and studying the feasibility of adjusting our school start times in response to community members bringing forth their recommendations from the American Medical Association and the American Academy of Pediatrics that state adolescents should start school no earlier than 8:30 each day, all of our kids across the board, 8:30. So that started in around 2014. And I would like to make sure I take this moment to publicly thank the community members who serve on the Continuous Improvement Committee, all of whom are volunteers and who have spent the past two years studying this topic in-depth from existing medical expert research to what it means specifically for the OLSD students. This committee has met under the leadership of Tanya Harris and has truly left no stone unturned. I made several presentations to the board, and additionally, I've had the opportunity to meet with Mrs. Harris. It's because of community members like this that Olentangy is such a special place. So the Community Continuous Improvement Committee really did a lot of work on this topic. We decided at that point, we would include information about start times in the Paul Fallon Survey, our survey that we do every year, or every two years, to, based on the results of the Fallon Survey, it was determined that we needed a more comprehensive survey of district parents only about the possibility of changing school start times. So we moved forward with that. We collected 7,465 parent responses between April 27th and May 5th of this year. Our school start time survey outlined a scenario which did not increase cost to the district through adding buses and drivers in order to create later school start times. Elementary students would have to go to school much earlier than their current school start time. So as you see, nearly 7,500 students or parents responded to this survey in one week's time in order to share their thoughts and opinions. What we found from the survey is that parents are aware of the medical experts' recommendations. Everybody agrees that it's a great idea to start school after 8:30. Later middle school and high school start times are generally agreeable for families with secondary students. And however, we found also that earlier elementary start times are not as agreeable for families with elementary students. So none of that information surprised us in the least. So here's what we finally came up with. Continuous Improvement Committee reviewed all survey feedback as that our leadership team at the, it was determined that the results show that it's not desirable to start elementary school early, nor is it desirable to spend significant dollars to increase the amount of buses and drivers that the district has to ensure that all students start school after 8:30. Therefore, these results simply do not demonstrate a strong favorable interest by our parents to send elementary-age children to school earlier to accommodate this change. Additionally, the results do not show a strong interest in shortening the school day to accommodate this concept. And no interest in going, and there's certainly no interest in going to the voters to increase this, the amount of buses and drivers needed to accommodate this change. So once again, I greatly appreciate the work of the committee and the fantastic amount of feedback received by our community on this topic. It's certainly helped us to navigate this decision and allowed us to determine the appropriate course of action, which will be to continue our current school start time schedule. So, questions on that? Yes?
Can you remind me what the cost was determined to be?
Oh, Jack, cost 44 buses-ish? 44 buses, I think was the number.
76,000 per bus.
90,000 a bus now?
90, yeah.
90, 90,000 per bus.
So that's about $4 million.
It was $4.6 million in bus purchase and another two and a half, three and a half or a half.
Right.
So it would be over a mil just to buy the buses. It's like a mil and a quarter to buy, just to buy the buses, yeah.
Well, it'd be 4.6, and then, you know, the two and a half million in operating cost is pushing another mil on top of everything else, which, you know, when we need two mils a year, every year, just to keep up with growth, that's a difficult concept. Because we have to push, it starts pushing any future levy to a much bigger number than is desirable. Moving on to our current, today's agenda, I just wanted to make sure I got some of those big topics out in front of you here. We have two administrative employments, new People Services Supervisor, Michaeline Suratchin, and Tori Fiedek will be the new Assistant Principal at Olentangy High School. You have an easement on the agenda for Tyler Run Elementary School with Delco. So those are the two big agenda items. And then finally, our, some important dates coming up. August 10th is our next board meeting. August 15th is our convocation and vendor fair, which of course, you're all invited to. See, the secondary starts at 7:30, elementary at 10 a.m. And then our first day of school is Wednesday, August 16th, which will come way faster than any of us can imagine. With that, any questions?
That's a good report. Thank you, Mr. Rafe. Mrs. Hatfield, you present your treasurer's report, please.
Absolutely. So I wanted to just touch base real quick on the budget, the House Bill 49, the state budget. It was, it did come through. It was approved by the governor with several vetoed line items.
47, actually.
47 vetoed line items.
Not that I know of.
The most significant of which for school funding was the TPP reimbursement. However, Olentangy has taken their TPP reimbursements, we haven't been counting on those. Those have been phased out for us since 2012, 2013, so it's not, it doesn't have a significant impact on us at this time. We are looking at a 5.5% increase to the cap in fiscal '18 and about 5.8 in fiscal '19. And we have 5% budgeted in the forecast as of right now. So not a significant change. We're grateful for the increase as any increase that we are given, but it's not, not going to be a significant change from the May forecast for us. And then we'll work through in the coming days, as the budget detail is released, we can go through line item and, line item by line item and figure out where the specific impacts will hit us. So those will be presented in the October update to the forecast. In terms of agenda items tonight, we have four items, or four action items on the agenda. Minutes, of course, are standard protocol to bring the minutes from previous meetings forward for approval. The appropriation adjustments that we have are for student activity budgets that are being added for next fiscal year. We have a couple of donations. We would like to thank Mr. Hoffman for the donation of a smart board to Freedom Trail Elementary, which is valued at around $5,000. And we'd like to thank the Olentangy Liberty Athletic Boosters for their donation of a little over $4,000 for an assistant football coach. So we appreciate all the support that our community members give us in not only monetary items, but in their time and efforts as well. Also, on the list of action items is the approval of the renewal contract with Milestone Benefits Agency. That group is the district's insurance broker. And just as a, to give you some background information, in 2005, we did a request for proposal to accept bids for brokerage services, and we selected Milestone Benefits Agency at that time. During that two years that we've been with them thus far, they helped the district implement and walk through becoming self-insured versus fully insured, which saved the district roughly $2 million in Affordable Care Act and state fees. We've also been able to do an RFP on our life insurance broker, which saved the district about $53,000 annually by changing those services over. And they continue to help us work through the insurance committee. So they are present at all of those meetings that we're having with our staff, discussing our insurance plans and what steps we can take to make those fiscally sustainable. So we feel that the contract that they have, that we've worked out is, you know, it's a reasonable contract, it's market value contract. And we were able to get additional fees, or additional services, rather, excuse me, that'll help us implement a digital conversion for enrollment. So what that means is employees will be able to digitally enroll in medical, dental, and vision insurance, which we then communicate to our vendors and allow us some administrative burden, ease in administrative burden of collecting those papers, getting everything input into the system, not only in payroll for the deductions, but then with the vendors as well to make sure that they have the coverage that they've selected. Are there questions that you have for me about any of those items? Thank you.
So Hatfield, do we have any public participation, session one?
No, there are none.
Session two?
No, there are none.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the treasurer action items, if you present them to the board, please.
Yes, please. I'd like to present treasurer action items A through D for approval, please.
Motion, please? So moved.
Sorry, I missed the second. Was it you, Kevin? Okay, thank you.
Any comments? Call roll, please.
Who?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. Rafe, would you present the superintendent action items, which also includes, I believe, the addendum?
Yes. Present superintendent action items A through E, along with the addendum to the agenda items.
Motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any comments?
Nope, none here.
Call roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
With that as a reminder, our next meeting is Thursday, August 10th, I believe?
Yeah.
Correct? So we will be back here for that. Motion, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments before we close? Call roll, please.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Thank you.